So, good evening and welcome to the City of Lake Forest Park City Council Special Work Session for Thursday, October twenty four, twenty twenty-four. And I will call the meeting to order with that, I'd ask for motion to adopt the agenda.
Second question. Would it be useful to put the two resolutions first so that they're done, then we don't have to stop whether to do that, just for a timing.
We're on the comp plan.
Oh, I'm not even on.
You're on the next meeting, okay. You're way ahead of yourself. It's all good, John. We're just talking comp plan here and then tonight, and I appreciate your efficiency. We'll go to the next.
He is ready to.
Yeah. I don't. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, you're not a little some favors to deliver.
Same.
Thank you, everybody. Adopted, it's adopted. The jet agenda is adopted. Thank you very much. And tonight, we're going to talk about the twenty twenty-four Lake Forest Park Comprehensive Plan Update. And we're continuing our discussion tonight on community and community services and public safety. Welcome, Christina. Can you hear us okay?
I can. Thank you very much.
Great. And we're also going to talk about parks, trails, and open space. And I've asked Vice Chair for Tony, continuous facilitation of these meetings because he's doing an outstanding job and saved my voice for a long meeting, which is coming later. So with that, Vice Chair for Tony.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. All right. Hi, everyone. And Councilmember Good had a great point earlier, which was, when we look at these goals and we look at these specific policies and they always start with a verb. My understanding is it's it's preface always by the subject, the city or the council will. Misable with the set. Incorrect to think that way?
No, the the goals are specifically oriented toward the city doing doing that thing. So, for example, if we look at goal. Let's see. CS dash what CS dash one is broken into parts A and B. That's an artifact of the twenty fifteen plan, but in part B, it says, address the needs of underserved populations within our community. The implication should be that the city would address the needs of underserved populations within our community.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. Yeah, because sometimes, you know, when you're reading through hot lists of these things, it can be weird when there's not a subject on a lot of these policies. So, thank you.
Sure.
All right. So, everyone, as we were doing the other day, I think especially with the way that these two sections are set up, and you have copies that believe we just did one page at a time. And so, for instance, on the first page of the Community Services and Public Safety CS, both CS one, there really are no comments, but I think you may have something you want to bring up. So.
Yes, my question is when it says that the city will do some or that will do something. So the city will determine, for example, CS dash one dot one, it says, maintain spaces for residents to communicate and exchange ideas with each other and the city. So by what you're saying, the city determines where those spaces are, because it's not. Right, so. That makes sense.
Yeah, so, excuse me. The city will determine when its actions are consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Something and part of part of the the purpose behind the comprehensive plan is to set our direction, but to be fairly broad to allow many different paths to compliance and to furthering progress towards these goals and policies. So, yes, the city could determine that adopting, for example, the the town center subarea plan, which requires some continuity planning around third place commons could be consistent with that goal to maintain those kinds of gathering spaces for community discussion. Adopting plans that create those kinds of spaces elsewhere, or even fostering community discussions without a formalized space could also be ways to comply with that policy as well.
Okay, because my following question is, for example, down a little bit lower, one dot four, is that if a resident reads this, they may ask, well, where is there a list for these spaces? So I I I'm just trying to think like citizen, where they would say, well, where are these other spaces other than the neighborhood center location, you know, the other than town center? So what other neighborhood center locations would there be? I guess maybe we talked about it.
Yeah, and and I think there are there are formal gathering spaces like third place commons and there are informal gathering spaces like, for example, the community park that's in the Southern Gateway Development. The city doesn't necessarily need to maintain a list, but those are the kinds of places where people come together, both both in a more formalized setting and in a less formalized setting and supporting those spaces and the the mixing of ideas and opinions and exposure to to new things in those spaces are all ways to support progress towards these goals and policies.
Yeah, thank you.
And I can see potentially our new community center at the Lake Forest Park might be another one of those kinds of.
Right, great. Anybody else have a comment on any of the policies in CS one? And Mr. Smith, is council member Riddle on here?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so council member Riddle, if you have any points you want to go ahead and chime in as well.
She knows that, right? He's seeing none. Then let's move on to the next page, CS two, Quality of Life. Again, there were no comments per se written on here, but does anybody have any comments now?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Smith. Okay, moving on to the next one. Page three, CS three and CS four on youth and seniors. And I think new policies were added, right? The CS three point eight, CS four point four.
Yes, these were requests made during the city council review period.
If I have any further comments on this?
I appreciate the the addition of CS three dot.
Councilmember Riddle? All right. We went through this. Okay, so fourth page, CS five and CS six on families and residents. And the only comment I have on this page is the bottom that says move this quality, which presumably means CS six point five to to CS, the section CSA under resiliency.
Yes, that was also a council member request and that I've I've made that move in this version. I apologize that the comment on this didn't show up.
Thank you. Way ahead of us. Thank you. Anybody have any comments on that fourth page? As a teacher, you're told that you shouldn't go immediate after you ask the question, you know, does anybody have any questions to immediately go ahead for the next thing? You're supposed to wait fifteen seconds, essentially. And that is the longest fifteen seconds I ever have to endure in the class. So I, you know, if I do cut in too quickly, please feel free to backtrack. And that said, I think the most of the comments were on that fifth page. Don't CS seven and CS eight of your public safety division and community resilience. So tackling CS seven, the comment about adding our police department and court system. Public safety speed limits. And then pedestrian overpass on the off way and ST and bus transit. So these are all things that we can discuss as well as anything else that I have to bring up. I guess the question is how much down into the leads we want to get here?
So I think one of the things that we want to consider, and I'm generally supportive of these, and the reasons for that is that as a policy document, we want to have the policies that we can point to when we're seeking funding from other organizations or agencies to say that this is part of our our comp plan. And so it's something that we are already as community supporting. So it's a basis for why we're asking for money for that. And that's one of the purposes of this comp plan is to provide direction for future activities, including seeking additional funding for twenty-two. So I'm generally supportive of these. And I think when as a body, we can then consider how we want to present, for example, the pedestrian pass.
I will see in that.
Right. Um, so I'm generally supportive of the ones who are in the comments. I would offer, though, that on policy CS dash seven point two, that reasonable use of crowd cameras and enforcement is an appropriate thing that we should have, but I would not include it as a part of the September, which is the current event of through environmental design, which is a different sort of concept. So my only comment is a fine bit of things.
Make it a different policy, for instance?
Yes. Well, make it a different stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
So it has its own idea, right? Because September is very defined, so.
So the there are some overlaps in some of the suggested new policies in that comment box to the side. Shall I use my discretion to eliminate that overlap and present three unique policies? Or would you like to stick with the four policies suggested in this comment section?
I will offer that simplification and reduction of duplication.
And 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 she's probably very good.
Okay. I think that would be wonderful. Thank you. Can you hear us okay, Christina?
Yes, I I can. Thank you very much for that direction.
Yeah, and I think the only point I had about these, and I I'm in general in agreement with these comments, is that this is where I wish Councilmember Bodie were here because she sat through the planning commission meetings on this. Is there a reason that Miss Aworth, you remember that they didn't want to, or they chose not to put these this level specificity into the section?
There's some, so in a in in this section or in these policies, there's a little bit of there's a little bit of overlap also with what's showing up in the transportation element. So that's where we do start to talk about multimodal mobility, cross connections, especially on larger larger roads like five twenty-two. So those things show up in another place. It's not problematic to have that here in the the Community Services and Public Safety section. But I think since there is such a nexus with transportation, probably it just made sense in the context of our discussions to leave those things there.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going against the will of that body. So that's that's great to know. Thank you.
I would just offer that, for example, on the comment where continue to evaluate seed funding for pedestrian overpass and off the way, you might expand that to say that seed funding for safe for improvements for safety for crossing off the way and balancer way such as including an overpass that you give yourself a more expensive policy.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
Yes, I agree with that as well.
Anyone else want to chime in on CS seven?
You may give us like separated.
Okay, that's fine. All right. Let's move on to CS eight then. Okay, under community resilience and the I think, yeah. I think that was my, was that my comment about the repetitiveness of this? But if it's not, I apologize, but I thought the same thing. So you know, I guess I I don't mind it being repetitive here, but I want to refer you all on whether or not it speaks to this specifically about the CS eight one.
She now suggestions.
Uh, you know, there's not a, at least on my copy, there's not a response to my comment.
I I did not make a response to it. I think that there's there's naturally some repetitiveness because of how the topics are broken up amongst all of these different elements and chapters. And we want collaboration on many different topics. And so we see a lot of the same collaborate with our local organizations that are doing this, collaborate with our regional partners that are doing this. I think that's just that's natural because of how we have to break up all of the different subjects that the comprehensive plan needs to address.
And I'm also good with not calling out the specific organizations I mentioned. Just wanted to use them as examples more than anything else. Okay, so Riddle. Do you have any, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, no. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I have serious technical issues. I know, no comments this time. Thank you.
Okay, or on any of the first four pages. Yeah, this is a, so, thanks. Okay, moving on to, okay, so let's move to, in your packet, there's the public, sorry, the parks, trails, and open spaces section. And didn't see any comments in the introduction. So unless somebody had a comment on that, we'll do the first page, our first page of policies. PT one and PT two, development and maintenance, also trails or the beginning of trails. Now that is all. So a couple of additions that were suggested before. Does anybody else have any other things they want to add, subtract, or comment about these particular additions? So, all right, so, all right, so moving on to the next page, then, PT three and PT four, safe access to parks, environmental protection. And then we'll save that PT five to set off there. So uh, PT three or PT four had no comments. Does anybody have either way out here? Okay, that going on to PT five, six. There's one, this, there's one comment, and I'm going to do these two just because I want to do three goals at the same time. Under active parks, PT five, mentioned dog parks, and I think that was done, so done, which is great.
Yeah, the dog.
Uh, no, but it's under PT five point two, which is engagement with community groups, stakeholders, and planning for active parks, recreational, off-leash dog parks, open spaces. I think that is the one comment I hear when I just wander around, talk to people about parks, especially a positive park this last week. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, and then on the same page, then, PT seven, arts and culture. Comment about inclusive representation. Wanted to make the comment that at least my read of when we discussed our Lake Forest Park earlier, that there would be a significant acknowledgement of the tribal people who live here. And so I thought it would be appropriate to leave that phrase there.
And so under under represented groups is what determines who those are and what are it could, it's it's to be anybody.
Good question. Ms. Aworth, as cities use their comp plans, what have you discovered that they use that phrase historically underrepresented groups?
When we're when we're talking about historically underrepresented groups, we're typically talking uh, well, we're we're very often talking about racial and ethnic component. That's where a lot of guidance directs us to consider the connotations of that term. Certainly, some communities are also considering an expanded definition that looks at socioeconomic status. Sexual orientation like LGBTQ considerations. There's a there's a broad spectrum in which people identify in pretty much every facet of their being. And you could consider pretty much anyone that doesn't fit kind of the the historically included mold to to be within there. Sometimes that looks at ability or disability, which may include neurodivergence as well as physical ability or disability. It it's very, it can be very broad. But at at a minimum, we absolutely need to include the racial and ethnic component when we're considering that term.
So it very much depends on that particular city's historical context.
I I think so, and kind of how the city decides it wants to think about and take action related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Because race is tied to or indicative of some of these other things. Like, you know, for example, people of color tend to be people of lower socioeconomic status. They, that is kind of a oversimplification, but race a focus on race does tend to pick up quite a number of other inequities, historic inequities as you're starting to plan for solutions. But there's certainly no harm in specifically considering an expanded definition that touches on much more than race.
I agree. Thank you. Anybody have a comment on that? All right, moving on to the fourth page of goals, so the eighth, non- building community and legacy one hundred years of environmental education. I had no comments here. Does anybody have anything they want to add? I think somebody was asking about green infrastructure the other day, and here's what the definition is.
I can see the damage.
Yeah, it's detoxed out so much, absolutely. Okay, so on the next page of the rest of the PT nine goals, and then go PT ten on equity. I have a couple of comments there. Mostly agreements, but there are two new policies, ten three and ten four.
You've got Rubik here, and you want to simplify it to like criteria?
Right, I mean, Rupert always puts it like with line, point number five, point number three. So I think you might want to be a little bit more of this more general, yeah.
Or you'll have to do a definition.
You could develop a program, you could develop a plan.
Right. And criteria works well. Criteria is good, yeah.
Right, I heard that. I I heard that at the very beginning. But certainly, we could pick something else.
Where are you there? Thank you.
Great.
Okay, there's been some, two sections I just went through. I I know that some of you may have, you have to, we're all went through this, and so may not have had a temporal flex, so. But I have a couple of questions about the appendix for the park section.
Okay.
So the first, it's the big table on page two hundred. And also, I I live in the Southern Gateway, and I don't know what Southern Gateway Park is.
Okay.
The table got the periods to have gotten, I actually am going to send an email about this, and appears that the table has gotten completely out of whack in Excel or wherever it is. It's not aligned to spaces or incorrect. That needs to be completely revisited.
I think you got a little fix there, though. Oh, the whole elementary school and that red shading is gone then, right?
Yeah, so I did. I did receive comments on this table specifically from a couple of different council members. I've made the the simple corrections, but I I will have some staff go back and review the twenty fifteen plan to make sure that we correctly address this Brookside Elementary, since that one's not a straightforward fix. I also on the the Southern Gateway Park did note that this was a private open space, but it sounds like maybe maybe that's not the name of it, and that name needs to be corrected, or it's not a formalized park.
Did anyone cover, is it, is that meant to be the playground that's in my townhouse development? Like, is that what that's referring to?
Yes, a private a private park for the Southern Gateway Development, yes.
I, um, so I can say, so it's private, it does not have a name, and it's, if you want to add that it has a playground, like a little like jungle gym, sly, that sort of thing?
Okay. All right, yeah, I did. So it's unnamed, unnamed.
We're not adding.
Southern Gateway.
We're not intending to have open spaces.
There's a couple mentioned here already. The civic clubs are listed as private space.
Yes. Yeah, these are still, so when we're when we're planning when we're planning for parks, especially when we're thinking about RCO funding, for example, you can still consider private private open spaces, private park spaces, when you're thinking about that, because those are still serving portions of your community. So it's good to have them reflected, even if even if they are private.
And I think the mayor had another one. Uh, yeah, I just, I think this, I think the table this needs to be re-verified. I mean, third place commons in indoor space, it shows walking trails, environmental education, ponds, wetlands, so. It's it's an inclusive place, and lots of things going on. I haven't seen a pond or wetlands there, so.
Yes.
This, I think, this references that daylight portion of Lion Creek that's in front at the town center, so that should be separately listed. Right?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Okay.
Because third place commons is actually a nonprofit organization and the undeveloped space that's in the city's purview would be a completely separate kind of.
Okay, yeah, I think I think that without having anything else to call it, this probably
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Commons itself probably doesn't really have walking trails, but it has community.
So. I count on Riddle. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I I I think the Grace Cole Park was more about the environmental education and ponds and wetlands, because they do have the signage and everything around there. I mean, it's it's a developed open space in the sense that it's got trails and boardwalks and stuff.
There it is. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think third place commons, commons got conflated with elementary school, private.
Yeah, so you see Burt Gilman, and then bicycling is two up, third place commons and food entertainment. So it looks like the left section is just just all the way two spots to, you know, offset from the rest of the section.
That makes sense.
And not, but I am, under size and acres, you have a length, which is connected to Brookside at the moment. It's twenty six miles. Not really sure what that means.
That's, that's for the Burt Gilman, that the whole Burt Gilman is twenty six miles, which two of those miles are in, okay, so it's not twenty thousand square feet, which I was also going to point this way.
Yeah, you can see from King County, twenty six miles bicycle walking. So everything to the right of the titles is too off.
Yeah, okay, if I may, let's, I wouldn't waste your time writing it for us. I think it just needs to be this one was fine. Realign, be fine.
Yeah, I see. So if I delete this and I delete this and shift everything up, it should start to correct itself. Okay, all right, I will work on that and get that table repaired.
Hey, Christine, one more, we'll work a comment. We just added an additional two point three acres to five acre woods. Not officially access accessible, but it will be by the time everything's fine, less problem. Well, no, but I think we should probably include that in the record.
In it, I'm sorry, did you say that was in addition to five acre woods, or that is five acre woods?
It's in addition to firewood. It's direct, directly contiguous with firewood. So it's seven point nine.
Tom, do you want to list that one as essentially private for right now?
Yes.
Maybe, maybe two lines. There's a five acre woods public and a five acre woods private.
Okay, so since we're here, does anybody else have a comment on the appendix? We have plenty of time. Okay. Then, um, sure. So what was the next thing? Utilities, utilities, that. Oh, except we do not know the markups. Yeah.
Well, I mean, honestly, I would not feel good about doing that, because I think that has a due date of October thirtieth, right? I have the schedule here. So November fourth is environment and equity, right? And then November seventh is economic development, transportation. And then the fourteenth is capital facilities and utilities.
Right. And the due date for environment and equity is the thirtieth, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So I think we, I I think we haven't had everybody comment on it. So. Can I say a question about the schedule? What does equity refer to in the agenda?
Um, I am, I did not have any input on the topics. That is a question either for Deputy Mayor Bodie or for Director Hoffman when they return. That may, I, it might be resolution of the, the preferred approach on incorporating equity in light of the cover letter. That would be my guess.
And Councilmember Riddle, you had a question?
Yeah, we have environmental quality. I'm wondering if it's just sort of a a typo, just a misunderstanding.
All right, we'll, we'll have to do a little digging on that much. So let's, let's go, let's go find out what people meant by that. Hey, so we're gonna go, sorry, just leave a.
Want to go back to the perks index on page twelve, which is the land use section for public and recreational space. I would encourage that the Steve, we use close.
Well. Oh, here it is. It's one ninety nine of your.
I'm online.
Are you finding it incomplete?
Inaccurate.
Inaccurate, okay.
I mean, the whole neighborhood is shown as a recreational space, and I don't think anybody does this on the bottom. And rising view is. Yeah. Oh, yeah. There, there, there are lots of errors in this.
Okay.
So there are spaces missing, and there are spaces that are not there, right? My horizon view is not properly shown. I'm sure it has some not properly shown.
It was, it was a purpose missing.
There's lots of, lots of opportunities.
Okay, we will, we'll take another look at this as well.
Thanks for the catch. I suspect this is relevant from previous efforts. This needs to be updated. Yes.
Yeah, there, there, this relies on the publicly available data and what the city was able to provide in addition to that. So we probably have some outdated information, and we just need to get some new parcel information pulled together.
All right, anybody else have any comments? I think that should be, because I want to change you back to the mayor. Oh, thank you, Vice Chair for Tony. Uh, colleagues, that's all we have in the agenda. We can't add anything additional to this. It's not a meeting anyway. You have about forty minutes before we have to reconvene upstairs in the situation for those birds. On topic, downstairs, they would jump.
Can we talk about off-leash park product or data?
It is a special work session, so I believe, yeah, i- if it's out of context of the company's plan, no. Yeah, same. Let's talk about that. This is to me. Anybody else? Great. Well, thank you, Christine. Appreciate your enormous lift on this, and we're going to be moving upstairs. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.